We don't need more jobs.
Nervous.
All right, here we go. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakota Board of Education to order today, October 20th. Adam, please call the roll.
Mr. D?
Here.
Ms. Casper?
Here.
Ms. French?
Here.
Mr. Horton?
Here.
Ms. Schaefer?
Here. Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Christina, any discussion? Hearing none. Adam, please call the roll.
Mr. D?
Here, yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you to those who've come out to be with us this evening. We appreciate you being here. I just wanted to reiterate, we have on our agenda, and we also have links on the website to our listening sessions that happened prior to this meeting. Just a reminder to everyone that that is available. It is also on Board Docs, how you can link to sign up. And if anyone would ever like to come to those listening sessions, they are welcome to do those, to participate in any of those that start at 5:30. So we look forward to getting hearing from our community in those sessions continually. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Whitley for superintendent's comments.
Just a reminder that... Sorry. Just a reminder that on Friday, October 24th, we have a Building Our Future or a Master Facilities informational session via Zoom. Again, this will be our second one via Zoom. That is at noon, so that is a great time for our community to be able to kind of log in from home, not have to leave, and kind of hear that message. If you are not available at that time, they are recorded and also placed on our website. There will be a series of those continuously happening throughout the month, but that one is this week on the 24th at noon via Zoom. And that link is available on our website. And then additionally, I would like to invite Mr. Brown and Mr. Brandt to the stage. The Butler County Educational Consortium has gone through a new superintendent change, and so I wanted to make sure that we put some names and faces together this evening and just let you do some introductions.
This will be short and sweet. First of all, to members of the board at Lakota, thank you for your continued partnership with the ESC. We do a lot of things together, our success liaison, our preschool programs, all those things. We appreciate all of your support. I'm transitioning out of the ESC. After 10 years as superintendent, I want to introduce the person who's going to replace me, Mr. Jeff Brandt.
Thank you, Chris, and good evening, board. And thank you first for all that you do in the community of Lakota. I know it's a tough job that you guys got, and it's a pleasure to be here this evening. I come away of 30 years in public ed and K-12, five years in the Princeton City School District, last 25 in the Oak Hill School District, last nine as a superintendent. So Chris was nice enough to think of me, and I owe him a great deal of gratitude for the opportunity to come up here and serve in Butler County. It's a pleasure to be here. And as Chris said, we just really appreciate the partnership that we've shared with Lakota, and I'm just looking forward to the opportunity to continue that. You've got tremendous leadership with here with Ashley and Adam, and just really looking forward to continuing that partnership as we move forward. So if there's anything I can do on my end as superintendent at ESC, I look forward to continuing that partnership that we've had, and I'm a phone call away. So best wishes to you guys as a board on your November ballot. So again, thank you for the opportunity to just introduce myself, and I look forward to working with you guys in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. With that, Mr. Zink?
Okay, so we've seen some things, and I wanted to bring this up so that people, if they're watching, can know, like, cash balances and things like that. We prove that monthly. That'll be in the treasure section of the monthly financial statements. So always in the community, be sure to look out there if you want to check any balances or kind of what we have going on. Also, another thing that I wanted to mention is we're going to put a meeting together. We've talked with some of the elected officials in the area to hopefully shoot for December, and we'll get some invites out, so that we can have a meeting with, kind of like a summit, with all of the people in the community, not all the people in the community, but all the elected people within the community. As we've went through the listening sessions or the Building Our Future sessions, we've really learned a lot and see if we can all collaborate together to do better for the community as a whole.
Great.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Zink?
Yes, I think I do. Thank you for the floor, everyone, for the last meeting we had. There are some things that I think I have some questions for the treasurer. He... It was a special meeting. I am so unsatisfied with the way we had that meeting on Friday because especially meaning that the agenda was not shared. And I believe that, Adam, you were able to make some comments that I came to your office today, and I wanted more information. So since we are on treasurer item right now, I want to bring that up. If we all look at your table, you're going to see something I requested Adam to print out for me. But because before I go into that, I was blindsided by Friday meeting. The special meeting, I did not get the agenda. In my mind, at the time I got the invitation for that meeting, I know we had some issues, employee issues, pending issues, and we had a student in the hospital and stuff like that. So my mind was like, we're just going to go through all that quickly. But when the item was brought forward, I was blindsided because I did not prepare for that meeting. If I had prepared for that meeting, the decisions I made that they probably would have been different. The reason being, we brought us something that I, to me, I thought was not transparent, because we have to be transparent to the community, and we have to be transparent in everything we do, and we have to make sure it's the students. That is our goal. So if you look at the number that I have here, since we don't have that in the agenda, and we're talking about treasurer, Adam, I want to thank you, because that day it is like we put you on the spot. And you were able to make a statement which I think led me to this. When we wanted to sign a disclosure on whether we're going to provide transportation or no transportation, while already the bond levy is already on, people are voting, one of the statements I made that day was, I'm not sure we're going to be fair to our voters if in the middle of election, we're going to introduce something that was not there at the beginning. So Adam, you were asked whether you have enough data to make a concrete decision, and it's like you were put on the spot. If I were you, I would be so nervous. So you said you think you have sufficient information. Am I right? Did I say that?
Yeah.
You said that. You agree?
Sure.
Okay. Because you said that, I came to your office today, and I say, okay, why did you make that decision? Because it's almost like we don't know what we're doing. It makes her look unprofessional, unprepared. But because even though you were put on the spot, you say yes, you know you can make a concrete decision based on the facts that you have. Now, let's look at the numbers that we have. And Adam, I want you to put this in the minutes, okay? If you look at the numbers that we have, we have three school districts that we can use as a comparison to either know whether we can make a concrete decision on providing transportation for all our students if this bond levy passes. There's Olaltangi Local School, I think it's around Columbus area. Their actual expenditure for transportation is 13.7 million on average, and their total enrollment is 22,978 students. On average, they are spending $599 per student on transportation. If you look at Lakota, actual expenditure is 22,432 on average, and total enrollment is 17,222 students, which is way lower than Olaltangi Local Schools. We are spending 1,318 per student in transportation. Now, one may say, okay, Olaltangi is in the first district, school district, Columbus area, we don't know what they're doing. So I also ask you to give me something closer, and you gave me Mason City Schools. Mason City Schools' actual spending is 8 million, 8.8 million, and their total enrollment is 9,959, and they're spending 8,800, I mean 885 per student in transportation. With this number, it seems to me that we are even, as at this moment, we're already spending way more than other school districts in our, on transportation. Meanwhile, we don't transport all our students. One makes us believe that if this levy passes, we will still have a doubt in transporting all our students, even though one of the reasons that we bring in this bond levy is we're going to consolidate our schools, which I believe will even make transportation a little bit more easier. So I feel like we did not do well in this decision that we made. On Friday's meeting, I didn't go home happy, and I was so, so, so disturbed. So I wanted to bring this forward. We need to discuss this. What is the reason why we thought it is a good idea to sign a disclosure on whether we are sure or not sure we're going to transport our students if this bond levy passes?
Would you like to start, Dr. Whitley, or would you like me to?
So the conversation on Friday was not about a disclosure, it was about an approval of a statement of facts. So nobody would have signed anything. It was to bring the document that we reviewed in that session, which had the slides about busing. There was one if the levy was approved, or one if not, if the levy was approved. And so there would not have been any signatures or anything. It would have been brought to the table to vote about that particular document. Now, the document in question, the two kind of new slides that are different than the ones that Adam and I have in our presentation regularly around master facilities, were the two busing. We did not have a slide in the presentation regarding busing, although we did answer those as they came up during sessions. So we were looking at not only the content of those two slides, but then talking about, would we bring that document, the statement of facts, up for a vote for the meeting? Because of the busing decision that was made, which was still a may rather than a will, so a step but not a definitive, we kept that statement of facts from coming to the table for a vote, because we didn't think it was necessary that we would add a slide to the presentation going forward in master facilities.
So that was a statement of fact, but I don't think that was a statement of fact. Another question I have is, why was not given the agenda? So that was a very important decision that we were discussing. I had no idea. And I know during that time, there's a statement that was made that Ms. French had a lot of questions. So that means she knew, or probably everybody else knew what was going to be discussed. That's why she had a lot of questions. I came with no information, nothing.
Isaac, when I called, I told you the two topics that were on discussion, which was the transportation and statement of facts, and those were also reflected in the agenda that was publicly noticed. So Ms. French had the very same information as you did, and she said, I would like to be brought up to speed after that meeting, because I have lots of questions just about the general topics that were provided. So everybody received the same information, and those same two discussion points were what were put out on the publicly noticed agenda.
Okay. Thank you so much for that clarification. I want to say here categorically that this opened my eyes to see some things that I never knew was there, because these numbers that I have here does not make sense. If we can pay this much even right now, and we're not transporting all our students, and other school districts, I believe they are transporting all their students, or probably they're doing as much as what we are doing, but we're still way more paying more per student in our transportation. I think there's still a lot of work that needs to be done. And I want our voters to know that we are, to me, this is incompetency. And this election that is coming, community members, make sure you're voting the right people to come in here and make the right decision, because I see here that we fail, and I don't like failing at all. I don't have information. This is to me a failure.
So I appreciate your perspective, Isaac. Some of the other things we discussed at that meeting were how, while we had recently gathered this information, we were also looking at not only information that we're gathering from Peterman, our current provider, but we were also working with the state, somebody who had previously worked with the state and is no longer, their position had been eliminated, so we're working on an independent audit to make sure we have the full data so that we can make a complete decision. Because some of the differences with this information that we are not completely clear on yet, that we wanted to make sure there was clarification, was what does this require? If you're spending less per pupil in transporting them, does that mean these students are walking two miles to their bus stop, or are they walking to a mile? We know that there was pushback locally when we went a half a mile with a freshman, and then we went back to only doing the maximum you had to walk was a third of a mile. So we wanted to dig into these numbers. And what I heard in the conversation on Friday was everyone is committed to making every effort to provide transportation. But again, one of the ways Mason is able to do that more efficiently is they have a much smaller footprint with the number of buildings, which allows for some efficiencies with transportation. So we're looking at, how might we, but we didn't want to give, even if we're 95% certain we're going to be able to make this happen, until we have all that data to be completely positive that we can do that. We wanted to make sure we completed that data gathering, and we didn't make a promise that we were unable to deliver, which would be even worse than saying we're going to do this and being unable to deliver. So while I believe from every conversation we've had, everyone is committed to doing everything in their power to make this happen, the worst thing we could do is overpromise and underdeliver. I would much rather underpromise and overdeliver when it comes to this, and not have any discussion around this be construed as we're trying to do something to make people feel like we're making a false promise, or something should change in the reimbursement for transportation, or something should change that then we're not able to deliver. So I think the discussion on Friday was to take the conservative approach of continue to work to gather that data, to continue to try to move this ball forward, to do everything in our power with our consolidated footprint to make this happen, but to not, to make sure we don't get ahead of ourselves before we have more than just a top line figure and really dig into what all of that looks like. So I don't know that anyone doesn't hope to get there. You can correct me if I'm wrong, that there isn't, that somebody doesn't want that as their goal, but we just need, I believe, to make sure we collect the full data before we get ahead of ourselves.
If I might, I might just want to say that I think there was differences of opinion in that meeting on Friday. So I know we like to use our collaborative language of we, I think there was differences across the board members that were there at that meeting as far as willingness, definitely with our current footprint. Like, that's one of the things we talk about, is the current footprint makes things very logistically difficult. I think, looking at the discussions and the discussions that we had on Friday, I think there was a different willingness across the board to lean in on the, once we have the consolidated footprint and the consolidated flow of K through 5, 6 through 8, and 9 through 12, I believe there were some people that were willing to lean in and say that that would be what we would deliver as part of the bond, if the bond passes. But so I wouldn't just collectively say we as the board at that point.
Christina, you didn't have the opportunity to be here, so you're at a bit of a disadvantage. Is there anything that you would like to add or from conversations? I assume that...
Did you share anything at that meeting that had comparable numbers to what it looks like with the current footprint and what it would look like with the potential new footprint?
We not shared. We discussed in the room that they anticipated going from around 200 buses to around 163 in the reduced footprint, but we did not share any documentations of data, other than the statement of fact document that we kind of had drafted.
So do we know what that number would look like comparative to the 22?
No. And so, speaking of the, so I'm going to use the number there at the top, the Olaltangi. One of the things that Adam and I have been exploring in that is that they currently have two bus tebo's that they transport from, so buses come and go from. And then also, they have staggered starts within grade bands. So let's just say, I don't know how many elementaries they have, but let's say they have six elementaries. Three might start at one time, three might start at another. So trying to look into and dig on top of not only just the logistical data, but then also their routing efficiencies as well. And so we know the whole numbers, but we don't know the exact logistics of routing that happened in each of these school districts, which is why we're doing the audit, so that then we can compare that to their data and any other comparative district that we would like to see. But we did not have that data on Friday in the meeting, because we don't even have that data currently for us as far as the routing. Peterman is working on it, and then the consultant, who originally worked for OSBA, is finishing that data as well. He's actually in district, I think, on Wednesday, if I'm not mistaken, with transportation this week, the consultant is, working on some of those data pieces.
So would it be safe to say that the conversation that happened on Friday was more around, do we believe that this is something that we would like to look into for the future?
I think, yeah, I think...
Not something that was a definitive database decision?
Yes. So where we landed on was, yes, that we need to look further into it. And I even said, as an educator, I want more data to make a database decision. I do think, depending on the board member, there was a more willingness to lean into and say, we will provide K through 12 busing versus we may provide K through 12 busing.
And had we moved forward with the statement of facts? Did we have an example statement of facts that you looked at on Friday?
We did, but it was really the presentation that Adam and I give turned into a series of kind of more concrete slides with a addition of a board slide, I mean, a board slide, a bus slide that said, if approved, we may bring back K through 12 busing. Superintendent and treasurer are looking into this. And then in the, if it's not successful version, it was that we would have, we would have no 9 through 12 busing, that we would only have K through 8. So really, the same things were saying, there was not anything definitive in the document.
So there was no draft of the statement of facts that we were making decisions around, or potentially gun a vote on tonight?
There was a draft document. But again, it was really the slideshow turned into more of a formalized presentation without the pictures, but the content was essentially the same as our master facilities, except for the two, or the one, rather, bus slide.
And so the conversation was also on Friday. My understanding of the reason for the desire to have the extra meeting was so that everyone wouldn't have to digest the information and make a decision of what to do, which way they were going to lean on the statement of fact here tonight, so that we could have that preliminary discussion. And then we had a conversation of, was, with the people there, was there a desire to bring back that statement of fact for a vote this evening? And to bring it forward. And the discussion at that time, my, again, we went through it, and we said, what is the will of the board? There were three people at that time who said they didn't think that it needed to be brought forward tonight to the meeting.
And so we took the one slide about may provide busing, and we put that into the master facilities plan. In fact, we presented that for the first time on Saturday at the Optimist Club that morning. So it had the same content.
I just think we have to be careful when we start looking at just numbers like this, because it doesn't, like Dr. Whitley said, it doesn't tell the whole story on how they're able to be that efficient, especially in Mason, because they have three buildings. So for that, I mean, that's part of why they're so efficient. They have three buildings, and that's all they have in Mason. So it's easier to bus all of those kids to three buildings than 23, and they're, you know, 10 square miles instead of 63. But there's so much else in these numbers that don't reflect, I guess, the actual information.
Yeah, I want to still say that. With this data that I have here, by the way, thank you, Adam, because your confidence is what made me to like, I need to look into this. You are a professional, and you know what you're doing, and I appreciate what you're doing, and you're doing a good job. Thank you. I think, apple to apple, this speaks volume. This can give you an idea. If at this point that we have so many buildings, and we're doing this, by the time we consolidate our buildings, we should not even say may or may not. The numbers speak for themselves. These numbers speak for themselves. And this is apple to apple.
Since we seem to be sharing our opinions, I would say, I understand that there's complexity in trying to, you know, understand how we would deliver this service. And I understand the complexity of our current band configuration. But moving to a similar band configuration, if we can't figure out to come somewhere even close to the fact that they're delivering service to 5,000 more students at 60% of the cost that we're spending today, that's enough of a number. I understand that we talk about, like, well, we just look at the numbers. That's a pretty big number. And I have all the faith in our staff that, you know, if we really looked at innovative solutions, looking at staggered start times or whatever it might take, what I don't want to get lost in this conversation is that the choice that we're relooking in this new band configuration is in effect taking away busing from ninth graders today. And when I look at these numbers, and I look at the fact that we could preserve that, expand that for 10th through 12th graders who need that service, and then also open up to the students, I mean, this would also allow us then to provide services to parochial students that are within the distance and all of that. There's a benefit to our community here, and I just don't want to walk away from the challenge of finding 40% savings that we could potentially get in here. So I understand the willingness is not quite there across the board, but for me, I definitely think we're up to the challenge. And, you know, what I heard on Friday was, Adam said, you know, thought, looking at things, he was confident we could get there. Dr. Whitley, you said that, you know, operationally, you had some concerns, so I respect that. But since we're sharing our opinions, I want to say, vehemently, I believe we can do this, and I think it's something that the district should stand up for and lean into.
Again, I just want to make sure, characterization of perspectives, that I don't think anyone is stating that they have a willingness to walk away from 40% savings. So I would ask that other board members not be characterized as having that willingness to walk away, and perhaps look at it as the other board members are being particularly cautious, knowing that at least two, possibly three board members are going to be new come January 1st. And unlike financing, which is finite, and how a bond will have to pay back the debt, there could be a board that has a different perspective on this going forward. And again, it's, you can look at it leaning in either way. And I, again, I think, I'll only speak for myself, I am absolutely willing to lean in and look at any way we might do this. This has been something that has been important for a period of time. We've looked at, you've heard me for years talk about how we might be able to partner, you know, look at things differently from a state perspective, where the law hasn't allowed that. It's just whether it's wise for us today to, with 100% certainty, put a stake in the ground and say that versus, I feel 95% confident we can get there. But for me, when our word is, what's going to carry us long term, I feel I'm leaning to the cautious side. So you can say that that's not my willingness to lean in, but I feel like it's my willingness to protect the district long term for making sure I don't promise something that we can't deliver. We're still hearing, and we still take seriously our 2013 levy commitments that we made, and making sure we're honoring those. And we want to make sure that anything we put out there, we're going to be able to honor.
Can I say something, Madam President?
Sure.
Thank you, Madam President. With that being said, you remember, I made a statement on Friday. I said, I know for sure, I'm not going to be sitting here January next year. And I believe we have been doing everything transparent. We've been upfront with everybody. But suddenly, when this issue came out, was surprised to me, and I don't want to make any statement. We already had a lot of resolutions that we wrote. I can't remember all right now. I don't want to make a commitment that... I don't want to make a commitment that I'm not going to be here to defend. And that was why I made that statement that day. Because I don't want to set other people for failure. I don't want to fail, I don't want to set people up for failure. And that was why I said, that shouldn't even have come up at all. It make me feel inadequate, make me feel inefficient to even talk about it in the beginning. The day Dr. Whiteley called me, I was in between meetings, and I, I knew the call was from her, and it's very important. I quickly took that, if I tell you I hear anything else apart from special meeting on Friday, I'm lying. Because I wanted to know what the, the issue was, whether it's an emergency that needed me or not. So since you say it was a, a meeting, and I knew if it was that important, we could have at least received the agenda. Maybe I would have prepared for it. So with that being said, I just want to rest this issue because the way it happened, and I'm not going to be here to talk much about it. I want to make sure I bring it forward. But we need to do a better job, all of us, we are all board members, we need to do a better job in the way we coordinate, the way we communicate, the way we, we, even in leadership, how we manage other board members. Because I didn't get sufficient information on that, so. With that being said, I'm done with it. I just wanted to clear this and have it on record. Thank you.
All right. Also, I would ask that if there is something when we do the approval of the agenda, I appreciate that this was put under treasurer's comments, but that we add an agenda item if there's a topic, either ahead of time by letting us know that you'd like to still discuss that in the meeting, or when we go to approve the agenda, if we could amend the agenda to add a, a agenda item that I feel like would be helpful in how we could manage the meeting in an effective manner. So I would appreciate that going forward. Anything else anyone else would like to say? All right, well now, our students have been patiently waiting, and we appreciate that, and we will move to our student spotlight with Union Elementary students. Please come forward.
So every day across Lakota, students are learning in exciting ways through projects, class discussions, or hands-on learning like what you participated in last month. At Union Elementary School, Olivia Overberg's fifth grader, fifth grade English language arts students reinforce their learning through games that make learning fun and meaningful. Here to tell us more are Ms. Overberg and two of her students, Oriella and Lilly.
I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you for hosting us today. I'm a fifth grade teacher at Union Elementary. We've recently adopted the new ELA curriculum, EL education, and I had the opportunity to find some ways to make it a little bit more engaging with workbooks for my students. So now you're going to hear a little bit more about the module that we've been learning and the activity that was observed from my two students, Lilly and Oriella.
In ELA, we've been learning, we've been reading Esperons arising and connecting it with the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, and how everyone has human rights, and how they're threatened, and what we can do to help.
In this activity, we've been answering questions in our workbook about different chapters we read in this book and played a game with it. First, we answered the question on our own, then we discussed our answer with our group. Next, we showed our answers to Ms. Overberg. If it was correct, we rolled a dice, we got to put our group number on a chart the same amount of times we rolled the dice. Then Ms. Overberg clicked a random number generator, and if your group was on that number, you got a point.
I thought it was fun because it made learning fun instead of just answering a question from our workbooks, and we all got to have fun during it, too.
I recently completed my masters, and on my capstone project that I was working on was focusing on gamification in the classroom. So it was my hope that incorporating games with the new curriculum will create a cooperative and engaging learning environment for my students. Thank you for having us today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions for our students and our teacher? Christina, do you want to start?
Sure. That was an excellent job, ladies. Congratulations on all of that learning and hard work. What were some interesting facts that you learned in your studies along the way?
We learned like how, like different human rights that everybody has, like freedom to like work and different like activities and rights everybody should have, no matter their nationality or anything like that.
Any other questions?
I learned that I, um, what did I think of? It was really fun learning about it, and the game was fun, and we learned about the Esperons arising, but also making it fun.
Correct.
That's great. Thank you, ladies, and great job, Mrs. Overberg, making sure that your students are staying engaged in really challenging topics.
Mr. White?
I would just like to say thank you for coming and presenting tonight. Very, very well done. I'm interested to understand, did, did you feel like you learned more through this process than just reading the, the story or the novel by itself?
Yeah, for sure. It was very interesting to learn how different people get treated with, for how they are and what they look like. So it's really cool to see and learn about how to treat other people right. So I thought that was fun.
Yes, and it was just very interesting of how it was talking about it, and I thought it was very interesting. And I got to learn a lot of different things, and I am very happy that I did it.
That, that's amazing, and that's very, very powerful. We talk a lot about reading comprehension, but to take it to that level, that, that's a really powerful thing to hear. So thank you. And Mrs. Overberg, I really appreciate your willingness to kind of lean in on gamification. You know, from a business standpoint, there's a lot of interest in that as far as consumer behavior goes. With so much that we've done behind the curriculum, do you feel like the curriculum while still delivering against the standards gives you the flexibility to make the biggest impact with your students possible?
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Sorry. So we've talked a lot about the curriculum because it's really, we, because we bringing in new, and, and I would like to understand from your perspective if the curriculum still delivers against the standards that it needs to, but gives you the flexibility to make, to tailor it to the way that you need to, to make the maximum impact with your students?
Definitely. I think that the, the curriculum does a great job of targeting a lot of different standards. And I definitely think that it's something that gives me a little bit of, of flexibility to be able to add some more things that maybe more activities or different items that we could use in the classroom. Trying to use a few different things to make it engaging, but I definitely think that there's some flexibility to be able to, to do that. They give you kind of all the standards in the beginning for the whole module, so it's nice to be able to hit a bunch of different standards, both fiction and nonfiction in just one module, which is nice.
That's great. Thank you.
Mr. Brady?
Thank you so much, ladies. That's a powerful presentation. Thank you. I have a question, but if you don't have, know the answer, please, it's okay, okay? Does any of you know at least one, uh, human rights activist?
Not that I-
Okay, it's all right, it's okay. I, I, I'm sure that with that, you're able to know how to treat other people and make sure everybody have their rights, right? Thank you for your presentation. Appreciate it.
Great job. You, you could tell you really enjoyed learning that way and learning the lesson. I have a question for you. You said you read the questions alone and then answered them and then discussed them with each other. When you read the question and you had a thought or something that you believed, were you able to have a discussion with like one of your classmates and see a different side of view, a different point of view?
Yeah, it was, it was kind of depending on the question. Most of the time I was able to figure out someone who would understand it and who really like can listen and figure out the question.
Great.
So it was kind of, it's kind of more of when and why, like the questions.
Um, we came up with one of the answers, um, we, one question at our group was-
It's okay.
What?
You are doing awesome.
How did your, how did your group come up with an answer? Like, how did you guys talk about your answers that you came up with? Or did you just come up with the same answer?
We did come up with the same answer sometimes. I can't really remember all the answers we came up with, but most of them, we did come up with the same answers.
That's excellent. Thank you both so much.
Mr. Zink?
I think most of the questions that I had, the rest of the group's kind of covered, so I'll pass to Dr. Whiteley.
So I probably should ask a question about the book, because I'm an, I was a former English teacher, but I'm going to ask, who won the game? Like, who, who got the most points? Was it your, was it one of your groups or no?
Uh, it was, it was a tie between my group and I think a different group. It was between our groups.
So that makes it even more valid. Okay, that makes it better. All right, excellent, because games can really make things fun and incentivize them, right?
Yeah, it makes it kind of, it, yeah, like I said, it was, it makes it really fun instead of just having to read an answer, you got to kind of, after you read an answer, you got a kind of, it was kind of a learning process. It was a learning process as well, because you wanted to make sure, because, like, you wanted to know the question, because the question I feel like really mattered in this game. And, um, and I thought it was really fun for me to like, it was really a good opportunity to like actually do the game. I loved answering the questions, but the game was just a lot of fun.
Good, that's good to hear.
All right, I have one last question. Do you, I guess it's a two-parter though, so, do you hope that you're going to have more games in class with what you're learning?
Yeah.
And then do you think that it helped you remember what you learned better by having it be part of a game versus if you had just read it and answered a worksheet or something like that?
Yeah, I want to do more games in the future. A lot of Ms. Overberg's games are a lot of teamwork games, which I thought really brought me together with my classmates. And the games really helped me understand the learning, which was nice.
Wonderful. Anything you'd like to add? Nope, you're good? Well, we thank you so, so much for coming and speaking with us today. We would love for you to join us up front to take a photo, and thank you to your teacher as well for instituting the learning she's had in her master's program to make every day better for all of you. So thank you.
It is awesome.
All right, moving on, we have board reports, Butler Tech. Some of our administrators at Butler Tech just participated in a conference on student-led businesses, so I look forward to seeing some development there. Butler Tech was also featured in Miami's recent annual meeting, and some of the programs that were featured were the new Advanced Manufacturing Partnership between Butler Tech and Miami, as well as the reintroduction of what used to be called our Teachers Academy, a new program that will be, allow for the first year of your Miami curriculum for future teachers to be done while at Butler Tech. And the same as the BS in nursing, that's going to be the same thing, where you can do one year at Butler Tech and then three years at Miami to finish those programs. So that was nice to be featured. The governor's aerospace and defense advisor was just down visiting the aviation center that Butler Tech is currently building. We did review that they also received a five-star report card, and a lot of the work in Butler Tech is about credentialing, and that's very helpful with the way the report card is structured to allow them to get some of those levels with those credentialing opportunities. And then finally, Project Life was recognized as one of the top twenty organizations nationwide and the only one in Ohio for abilities, for the Abilities Transcend Challenges Award. So that was nice to be recognized with Project Life, as they continue to franchise that and offer that to school districts around the country. So any questions? Hearing none, we'll move to community engagement.
We had a community engagement, I believe, last week, two weeks ago. We talked a little bit still about the Adam and Ashley continuing to do their informational sessions for the bond issue, but we also talked about in November, we will be putting a thought exchange on for topics for community conversations. If you remember, we paused on community conversations because we were doing master's facility and bond informational sessions, and we will pick up community conversations again in January. So we will put a thought out, exchange out in November to get some ideas of what some topics people may would be interested in for community conversation.
All right. Policy Committee first reads. We have lots of those.
Good evening. It's good to be up here. The Board Policy Committee met on October the thirteenth. Present at that meeting were Ms. Casper, Mr. Horton, Mr. Zink, Dr. Whiteley, and myself. Norm Burkhart from Neola led us through the fall update. What you have in front of you is a brief summary of all the policies which were reviewed. Each policy was reviewed during that time, and you have a summary in front of you. You also have access to those policies in board docs. What I'm, will do this evening is to, I will quickly go through each policy and just make some comments, and I will pause at times to see if there are any questions or comments. So I'll start with fourteen twenty-two. That is a replacement where it combines nondiscrimination and anti-harassment, and it's replacing thirty-one twenty-two and forty-one twenty-two. And you will see a number of policies that get folded into fourteen twenty-two as we move forward. Next, the next one, fourteen twenty-two point oh-two, we're rescinding that because it is part of fourteen twenty-two. Sixteen thirteen is new for us here in Lakota, and it is grooming language. It's official legislative language that's being added to this particular policy. Sixteen twenty-three, you will see this a couple times in these, they're wordsmiths, we call them wordsmiths. And then specifically, the address change, the civil rights offices in Cleveland no longer exist. So that has been removed, and you'll see that on a couple different policies. Sixteen sixty-two, the anti-harassment is being rescinded because that, too, is part of fourteen twenty-two. Twenty-two sixty, another wordsmith, an address change with the Cleveland office being closed. Twenty-two sixty point oh-one, wordsmith and the address being changed. Twenty-two sixty-six, we added that grooming language, again, from legislation. Twenty-four thirty point oh-two, we removed community school and STEM school students from that, and it's a part of ninety-two seventy. So when we get to ninety-two seventy, that's where we include those students. Twenty-four thirty-one, adding ice hockey as an option for students. Thirty-one twenty-two is a replacement, it's part of that original fourteen twenty-two policy. Again, on thirty-one twenty-two, we're rescinding that because that's part of fourteen twenty-two as well. Thirty-one twenty-three, wordsmithing and address change again with the Civil Rights Office being closed in Cleveland. Thirty-one thirty- Thirty-one thirty, um, added language on seniority and continuing contract not being a primary factor in teacher assignments. We had a meeting today that talked about that. That is something that, uh, is something to note because seniority and continuing contract have been used as a primary factor, but that's no longer the case in this particular policy. Thirty-two thirteen, the grooming language, again. Thirty-three sixty-two, we rescinded that because it's a part of fourteen twenty-two. Forty-one twenty-two is a replacement, part of fourteen twenty-two. And again, forty-one twenty-three, wordsmith, address change, civil rights. Forty-two thirteen, wordsmithing. Forty-three sixty-two, rescinding part of fourteen twenty-two. Fifty-one thirty, um, the word withdrawal really means, uh, dropping out. So if a student drops out of school, we no longer need to notify the registrar of motor vehicles. Fifty-one thirty-six, one of our favorites, um, current cellphone language is in place. Um, we've looked at that policy. We're waiting on any new information on a new implementation date moving forward. Fifty-two hundred attendance, we added language to excuse students, uh, from school if they attend a driver's education course. And we anticipate more changes coming in the winter update. Fifty-two twenty-three, again, we anticipate changes coming from the winter update, more on that to come. Fifty-four oh-eight is new for us here in Lakota. It replaces s- this particular section in fifty-four ten, it follows state language for acceleration. And then if you look at fifty-four ten, it removes that acceleration language because it's now in fifty-four oh-eight. Sixty-one oh-nine, new for us here, um, and the, uh, language, um, I wanted to point this out. It's more than just words, I mean, it is wordsmithing, but we go from R and well to maybe and may to give us flexibility there. Sixty-one fifty-two is a wordsmith issue. And sixty-eight thirty, when it comes to the auditing, we added language that is good practice for us to follow. We rescinded seventy-five forty-one. And eighty-three hundred discusses language, added language on implementing a plan to continue if we had any type of hazard or condition that would not allow school to continue. Eighty-three oh-five is added language to ensure all data is safe and secure. Eighty-four hundred is a wordsmith issue. Eighty-four sixty-two, we can now be more inclusive on who trains our staff beyond law enforcement and prosecutors. Eighty-six forty allows students to eat on the bus now for non-routine trips. And ninety-two seventy was that one policy I mentioned earlier that we now include, uh, those, those community and STEM students. Any questions from that review?
Anyone have questions? I actually have a couple questions, sorry, I don't wanna jump in front of anyone, but nobody else. Um, fifty-one thirty-six, that's the communication device one, we've certainly talked about that a fair amount. Um, help me, I believe I heard you say we're waiting on an implementation date. Is that, are we waiting on the state, are we waiting for us, but what, help me understand what we're waiting on?
Yeah, Dr. Whitley can speak more than, she's spoken on this in, in the past, but w- we follow the, the language of the law right now. Um, there's been some, um, interpretation on what it means to be the instructional day.
Right.
Um, and we have reasons to believe that that's gonna be interpreted differently by the governor. Um, and there's gonna be a new policy, uh, law that's, that's, um, put out, and we will make sure that we follow that.
So the anticipated date that we had all heard was January first. Um, that might not be the case anymore. Um, the bill is still pending, so it could be January first, it could be the end of the year and into next year. So we are waiting on the date of the legislation that will say when it will go into effect. I think all school districts are planning for January first because that's the last date that we heard, um, but that currently is pending.
So at the next board meeting, are we looking to approve that? Or is that one that we're just going to put on hold until we have those dates?
We will, we will put on hold until we have those dates. So the current policy, as Erin mentioned, this covers us legally right now. Until the new, new bill passes that basically says all cellphones are banned from eight to three during a school day or whatever the school day is, um, that has to wait on the implementation date. So as soon as that policy or bill were to pass, um, then we would work with Neola to see what that implementation date is and work around that. Um, so we had anticipated, if you remember, probably starting communication about now with families about January. Um, again, just like we were in the summer, we are on hold, um, because the legislation does not have that in order for that bill to be passed with the implementation date in plan. So right now, we are legally compliant with the cellphone law and will continue to be until legislation is passed.
Without any of these changes? So.
The bill, so the, the current law is what is in effect right now as far as the instructional day. The one that bans cellphones altogether, meaning like during the hallway and the cafeteria, that has not been approved yet with an implementation date.
So what happened is they, legislator, when they passed that law, they put the language into it and sent it to the lawyers, to Neola. And that is what we have in place, that's not what the governor wanted.
The governor did not like the legal interpretation, so we are waiting on the new bill from the governor to be put forth.
So, so our new cellphone policy that we put in place this summer and, and, and knowing the law that was put into effect in the summer is compliant, so that's the status quo.
For the current.
We just know that this is gonna change, and there, what the original timeline was gonna be, January, so we're preparing for that. We don't have that legislation yet to actually make a policy change.
Okay, so when I read this policy here, and it's got the green changes and the mark-outs, we won't do that now.
The, the green, this is, this is the same policy in essence that we have in place.
Okay, and then.
It's, it's a good question. There's a few clarifications that came out in that back-to-back with the lawyers, with Neola. And so this still maintains the intent, the purpose of our, of our cellphone policy. It's just a few things that were just highlighted to, to basically be, you know, more clear.
Okay.
After that discussion, but it doesn't change how it's implemented or anything like that.
Okay.
We're in the same implementation that we were on August, I think we approved it like on August fifth or something like that, yeah.
And then just for anybody curious, since everything is apparently rolling into fourteen twenty-two, it is now fifteen pages long.
But I, but I will also say, so those two policies, um, fr- from our standpoint, particularly when you're a compliance officer um, or anything like that, the problem is that when you would get to nondiscrimination and anti-harassment, like, the processes were the same, right? So even though we had two different policies, the processes that you followed were identical. And so if sitting them and putting, because sometimes you were like, which one do I follow cuz it might be both? Um, and this way, it puts them under the same policy, and then you just essentially, you read the delineations at the top or the bottom, and then the process is the same. So for, for educator's standpoint, it's actually cleaner that it's all in one because the process doesn't appear to be two different ways.
Great. Any other questions, thoughts? Um, we'll move to facilities, thank you very much. Facilities Committee update?
Um, I mean, facility, facilities committee continues to talk about master facilities, right? It's, it's the hot topic right now. Um, I know, um, uh, one thing, just for clarification, we do have a subcommittee tomorrow morning, a facilities subcommittee at nine AM, just to clarify. Um, I know that was in my update, um, but I think really it's just about continuing with the community engagement pieces. Um, I do know that the quality profile, the master facilities plan mailer, um, and I think there's some postcards slated that will be kind of readily hitting mailboxes over the next several weeks. Um, and then last but not least, um, just because we know people are, are busy and, and trying to stay informed and keep on top of everything, the last week, uh, of October, I think it's October twenty-seventh all the way through November third, there will be a heavy push of kind of informational sessions from Adam and I in case people just want, you know, have some clarifying questions or need some additional information. So that week, there will be a very steady drip, uh, multiple times a day of that, whether that's in Zoom or in person. All of those are on the calendar to, to, to make sure that we just have, um, people equipped with everything that they need to make an informed decision.
Great. Uh, Finance Committee, Mr. Zink?
Finance Committee met last week. Uh, we discussed several of the upcoming legislations that could impact property taxes, collections. And with us approaching a twenty mil floor, we're currently not on a twenty mil floor. But with us currently approaching that, maybe getting a longer-range perspective on what the implications of our financial picture would be, could be useful, uh, for the district as a whole. So looking at developing something like that. And then also, we rescheduled the meeting for November sixth just due to the proximity to the November fourth topic, or bond issue, and, um, rescheduled that, the notice went out this morning for November twenty-first at twelve o'clock noon.
Great. Board Professional Development? Anyone participate in any professional development?
I think I.
Yeah, um.
Go ahead.
Ms. Casper and I, we attended the, uh, Fall Conference for Southwest, um, OSBA, I'm sorry. Uh, the highlight is actually our CEO was able to attend, our new CEO was able to attend. And I would say that most of his, coming in with over twenty-five years' experience as a superintendent. And, um, he is, uh, very, very appreciative of what all board members are doing. He knows what we have to go through, so he wants to, uh, extend his appreciation to all of us, what we do for the community, for our schools, for our students. And, um, the other, other major thing, I think, that also is interested to report is, Ms. Nicole from the, uh, Policy Department also gave us some updates on some of the policies that are either still in the House or Senate. So basically, that's what, uh, I will report on that. Ms. Casper, do you have anything to?
They just gave a lot of legislative updates, um, with the, with the caveat that they could potentially change by, by the time we left the meeting, so. I just said to make sure you're watching OSBA's website for the legislative updates and checking our emails because they're changing constantly. That was it.
Did they honor one of our schools as well?
Oh, yes, thank you, Mrs. Shaffer.
Yeah, sorry.
She wasn't there, we were.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, they honored Cherokee Elementary for being a Purple Star School. We have a, uh, certificate to bring to Mrs. Montgomery and her team, so that was kind of nice. They read all the names of the schools that were Purple Star Schools, so Cherokee, I think it's a renewal for them too.
Yeah, they won it before, right?
They've had it in the past, so.
Yes, yeah.
Alright, great.
Now that's all.
Um, and with that, we'll move to the highlight of our evening, other than our student spotlights, of course, um, of the report card presentation. We look forward to hearing our curriculum team and highlight the great work that's happening. Why is it so dark out there? It's dark. Getting ready for Halloween? Good evening.
Hi.
Hi. Uh, thank you so much for having us tonight. I'm excited to be here, uh, to share some incredible news about our district's performance on the twenty-four twenty-five, uh, Ohio State Report Card. We're truly proud of these results and even more proud of the hard work and commitment that made them possible. I wanna start by thanking our incredible staff, teachers, and administrators across the district. Their dedication to our students shines in these outcomes. I also wanna sincerely thank our Board of Education for your unwavering support and especially for approving the adoption of our core ELA and math materials. Uh, that decision gave us a solid instructional foundation, and it's paying off for our students, as you'll see tonight. I'd also like to give a quick shout-out to the Lakota Learning Team, uh, several of which are here with me tonight, which includes our work in curriculum, MTSS, professional development, and assessment. Uh, this teamwork behi- works behind the scenes every day to make sure our teachers have what they need to help students thrive. Um, joining me tonight in our presentation are several members of our team. So I've got Andrew Wheatley, the Director of Curriculum and Instruction for grades seven through twelve. Uh, Emily Herman is right behind me, she's the Director of Curriculum and Instruction for grades K through six. A new face to the team is Dawn Harris, our new Director of Gifted Services. Uh, joined by another new face, Kristen McCormick, who is our Director of English Learner Services. And lastly, but not least, Justin Wilson, our Assistant Director of Curriculum and Instruction Focused on Assessment. Uh, so tonight, we'll walk you through the highlights of this year's report card, as well as some areas we're targeting for continued growth. So before we dive into the highlights, I wanted to walk you quick, quickly through the structure of our presentation. Uh, we'll start by sharing some district-wide highlights, and then look at our areas of strength, some key areas of focus, and finally, some specific action steps that we're going to take in response to our data. So it's helpful to review, um, the over, how our overall star rating is calculated on the state report card. Uh, so you can see in the visual here, while there are several components, achievement and progress still carry the most weight. Uh, these continue to be the strongest indicators of student success across the state, and for Lakota, they remain our focus. Um, this year, you'll also notice the college, career, workforce, and military readiness. What we call the CCWMR was officially added as a weighted component, and now it, uh, stands for twelve point five percent of our overall rating. Uh, this is an important shift, and you'll hear a little bit more about that tonight, um, and what we're doing to strengthen that area. So with that in mind, let's go ahead and look at where we're shining and where we continue to grow. So here you can see our overall ratings across each of our report card components. We're incredibly pl- proud to have maintained our overall four point five rating, especially in a year when many districts across the state experience declines. We maintained in each component, with the exception of the new CCWMR component, so we have four stars in achievement, four stars in progress, five stars in gap clos- closing, four stars in graduation, three stars in early literacy, and then on the newest CCWMR, we, we earned two stars. Uh, these results reflect both strong areas of performance and areas where we continue to focus our efforts. And we're proud of where we are, but our goal always remains clear that we are working towards achieving that overall five-star rating, and we believe we're on the right path to get there. So this slide gives an overview of some of our district and building level highlights. There's a lot to celebrate here. Maintaining our four point five star rating for a second consecutive year is a major accomplishment, especially considering how many districts saw declines. But what's even more impressive is the context behind that rating. Lakota is one of only twenty-four percent of districts in Ohio to earn a four-point star rating or higher. And among those high-performing districts, we stand out. We have the second highest enrollment, which means we're doing this at scale. We serve a high percentage of English learners, English learners, excuse me, with the highest mobility rate in that subgroup. We also rank in the top half statewide for socioeconomic disadvantage, and we operate with the highest general education class size ratio. In other words, we are achieving excellent results in a large, diverse, and complex system. That's something we're incredibly fa- proud of, and it speaks to the strength and commitment of the entire Lakota team. So to enhance that a little bit further, this puts our fi- our four point five star rating in perspective by comparing Lakota to other districts across the state that earned the same overall rating. And what really stands out is how efficiently we are achieving these results, even with greater levels of complexity. Our enrollment is more than double the average of these peer districts. We're operating with two thousand less per pupil, larger class sizes, a higher percentage of economically disadvantaged students, and twice the English learner population. And if you take the same comparison and look at districts that earned a full five-star rating, the differences become even more striking. So while we continue to push toward that five-star goal, this comparison highlights the exceptional value we're delivering. It's a truly a testament to our hard-working students, dedicated staff, the strength of our systems, and the support of our Board of Education and community. So this next slide compares how Lakota compares to similar, groups of similar districts as identified by the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce. So ODU determines these groupings based on factors like enrollment size, socioeconomic status, percentage of English learners, mobility rates, and other demographic indic- indicators. So the comparison is meant to reflect districts with similar profiles and challenges. What's encouraging is that Lakota stands out among this group. While many of our similar districts struggled this year, Lakota not only held steady, we maintained our strong performance. In fact, more than half of these similar districts, as evidenced on the right, saw a decline in their overall rating, while the rest stayed the same. Not a single one in this group moved up. So again, this reinforces the value and consistency of what we're doing here in Lakota. And among districts with comparable complexity, we continue to lead the way. A little closer to home, uh, this comparison zooms in on our neighboring districts here in Butler County. As you can see, Lakota performed, continues to perform well even as the largest district in the county. Size brings complexity, but it also gives us an opportunity to leave, lead. And then, and this slide shows that we're doing just that, maintaining a strong. And this slide shows that we're doing just that, maintaining a strong rating and delivering consistent results for a large and diverse student population. So now, we're going to dig into some of the specific areas of strength and focus within the report card components. And to walk us through the nuts and bolts of our data, I'm going to turn it over to Justin Wilson, our Assistant Director for Curriculum Instruction Focused on Assessment.
Next slide, please. I guess I can do that, right? Because I can do that. There you go. Been too busy digging into the data here. So achievement continues to be a strong component for us. Again, achievement and progress are two heaviest-weighted always in the report card. A strong four stars, but amongst that, we see a steady increase in performance index each year, which really weights out not just how our kids do, but just how well, not just passing, but just how high up those scores can go. And that's really been a pride point for us. We really tried to stress as an entire team and our building teams to really make sure our kids are achieving at their highest possible potential. And I think that bar graph really shows that as well. The red is actually proficient, and then the yellow is accelerated, and then the green and dark green are advanced and advanced plus. And as you can see, those numbers continue to increase over the course of five years, while our limited and basic continue to decrease. So we contribute that to a lot of factors that will probably come up here in a little bit in our action steps, but we feel like that's continuing to be a positive trend here in our achievement data. Again, some of the strengths that we have there, you can see, you know, we continue to move up as far as where we are in terms of our state ranking. We have a lot of kids that take classes that are above grade level at this point. That's been a part of our intentionality, as you've heard in various presentations, really trying to make sure we're matching our kids with their skill level and ability level. Something not captured very extensively on report cards is the work we've done in our advanced placement programs at the high school. This is a really, I think, a really great point for us, that we set out to get more kids into these classes and also have that large goal of making sure they're successful. And what we see is a true increase in the number of kids taking these courses and taking the assessments, but then also an increase in the number of kids earning a three or higher score in that. So we're both increasing the number of students taking these really rigorous, potentially college-credit-awarding classes, as well as really seeing the success coming from that as well. And Andrew's going to dive into a few more of the kind of nuances of that data here in a few minutes. Progress. As you know, a few years ago, when we really took a focused interest in looking at our report card metrics and what we could do in the classrooms to strategically improve, this was an area of extreme focus for us, making sure students, again, are growing, meeting, and exceeding the projections that the state has for them based upon how they've done in the past. And you can see, we have another solid four-star rating, second year in a row on that. Again, a little context, zero in a growth index indicates one year's growth. And so, and if anything that is a 2.0 or higher is considered strong evidence of more than a year's growth. And so, as a collective district, we had a growth index of over eight, which tells us that we are truly moving our kids in the right direction in terms of growth. And remember as well, this is a three-year metric, so this is now two years of good. We had one still hanging off there, and so we're still hopeful that next year, we'll see another bump here as well. And then just a little bit of a breakdown on that as well. When you look at it by course, you see our courses from third through eighth grade, which is the math and ELA, and the science at the top, those are consistently, almost all in the blue, as well as in the high school, again, showing consistently evidence above growth. We've talked before about the government number, and we've got some great things in our action steps that continue to move it in the right direction. And again, all the trends are pointing in the right direction with our progress data. All right, gap closing is an area of strength, but also will lead into some of our areas of focus, because it's a very large catch-all component of the report card. Big picture, we are a five-star district. As it comes to gap closing, we're in the top 10% in the state, again, which I think is impressive, given that we do have, if there's a subgroup out there that the state considers, we have it, because we are such a large and wonderfully diverse district. But we have the five-star as it comes to the English and math achievement and growth. We continue to meet the achievement goals year after year, even as those continue to rise for each of our subgroups. And progress, while we didn't meet every point, we are still earning, we are still showing all of our subgroups are making at least one year's growth, if not more. The bar is very high to earn those points, but we're still definitely moving in the right direction in those numbers, and that top part of gap closing are tend to swing a little bit from year to year. A strength within this, two strengths that we'll pull out here. One is with our chronic absenteeism. We all know that from COVID, we just saw the carnage of attendance issues that started at that point. And we've all across the state and across the country have been trying to move ourselves back in the right direction. And Lakota has truly done a great job of getting our kids back into school, having the intervention plans in place at the building level, and showing our kids, this is a wonderful place that you want to come to and be a part of every day. And so, our number has, percent of chronic absenteeism has, you know, certainly decreased faster than what the state level has, and we, again, contribute that to a lot of the systems and processes in place. Another piece, separate but also on this, the same slide, is our English-language learners. Again, we have a very large population here, and we meet them where they're at, and we grow them. Both, they are some of our strongest value-added data in that progress, both as far as the actual content areas, and they're also, we're seeing by the slide up there, that they are acquiring the English language as they come in here, according to their OALPA scores that they take every year. So we're definitely moving in the right direction there, and you'll hear a little bit about our newly-minted, from our newly-minted EL director, hearing a little bit about some of the plans we have in place this year. All right, one area of focus, early literacy. Again, it's three stars. I'll put that into context, but of course, because it is three stars, we want to also make sure that we drill down and focus on that as well. We still managed to increase, we still moved up as far as where we are in state ranking with that, which is a positive. But one thing to put into context is we dug a little bit of who did get a four, and who did get a five in that particular rating. Of those schools that are fours and fives, what we found is that the majority had a continuous grade band, is one interesting point. We can't definitively, of course, tie that to data, but in, of course, in Lakota, we have a K-2 situation and a 3-6, whereas this particular metric looks at kindergarten through third grade. And we found that the vast majority of these schools that were performing at the four and five rate were in these places where the school, the students had a continuous education in that same building for that particular time. We also know that at the third grade, the metric changes. It goes to the Ohio State Test versus the MAP screening. We're also still in the process of moving into the MAP growth versus the MAP fluency, which is something I know Emily has addressed here over the last few years. A few other things, we really drilled down, too, to really see what made that five. Well, there were only 33 districts in the state that earned a five, and of those 33, only seven of them have the early literacy improvement component, meaning their students are coming in at 90% or higher already, before they even walk in the door, already ready to read. And so, they are coming into it at a little bit of an advantage. So all those are factors to say, yes, our kids are learning, they are improving their growth and their literacy. We're doing a great job at moving them forward, but we know there's also some action steps we can take to move them forward. One other little sort of rabbit hole we went down with that, we looked at for that cohort of kids from kindergarten through third grade, how they attended kindergarten in their kindergarten year. And while the cohort of half-day kindergarten was much smaller than the full day, we definitely did see that there was a little bit of a bump in being on track with those who had a full-day experience versus the half-day. All right, from one end of the K-12 experience to the other is graduation. We are at a strong four stars, again, out of five, but we did meet all of our subgroups as well, as far as meeting what those rates need to be. But then, again, being four and obvious wanting to strive for being five, we started to dig into, well, who are the students that represent that 4.5% that are not graduating? And there will always be a certain percentage of those that are students with disabilities who choose by their own right to continue on in their education for an additional year, which we, of course, we know we have a good value here, so we applaud them for doing that. But for those that aren't, what we found is, by and large, those are kids who are coming to us much later on, junior high and particularly high school. When a student comes to us later on, they often come with a limited instruction somewhere else, could be somewhere around the world, could be somewhere around the country. Those tend to be the profile of the students that don't graduate. But by and large, the longer you're at Lakota, the more likely you are to graduate. And our kids who've been with us for the whole K-12 experience, they definitely get across the board in four years, and they shine. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dawn Harris for talk about gifted.
Thank you. Thanks so much. So before we start to unpack the metrics for gifted performance in the 24-25 school year, I just want to take a minute to reflect on kind of where we've been. So as of 21-22 school year, ODEW and the Gifted Planning Committee at the state rolled out the new metrics for gifted performance. It was a three-year rollout, progressive rollout of getting us up to the current performance metrics that we have been evaluated on in 24-25. So in 24-25, we were actually at our first full year of measurement and accountability outside the new roll-up of those measures. So in the area of gifted performance, we are evaluated on three separate sets of criteria. That is our actual performance, which is student achievement on the OST test, progress, or those value-added measures that show gifted student growth, and then gifted identification and service metrics. And together, all three of those comprise 15 points of the 70 points combined in gap-closing measures. So those are all-or-nothing scores. So five points for each of those categories, we get a zero or a five, depending on where we fell in alignment with the metric presented. So, you know, the three parts, as we look at those individually, we can see that in the area of performance, or those achievement scores on achievement tests, we didn't hit the mark there. It's important to note that those scores of proficient or lower, any student, gifted student who's scoring proficient or lower, will ultimately have a negative impact on our report card measure there. We want to see our gifted students performing at accelerated and advanced level in order for us to have a positive impact there. But I will say that from 21-22, we did increase from 94% then, all the way up to 97.2, having us miss that 97.5% mark by just 3/10 of a point, which we'll get there, I know we will. But our goal is that, moving forward, we want to start to use that targeted OST data to find those areas that we need to apply some interventions as early as possible, even after those tests have been administered, because we want those students to be able to still excel in those skill sets that they're going to need even after the test. As far as the area of progress, that's where we got our five points on the gifted goal, and I would say that we're performing exceptionally well there with regard to gifted student growth. And this is one of the most challenging areas for gifted kids to meet, because a lot of them are already at some of the highest levels of accomplishment, and growing gifted kids can be a real challenge. In 22-23, we actually earned two stars in this category, but we have held steady at four stars for the past couple of years. So then ID and service, it's a pretty complex category of measurement. There are about 14 separate areas in which we're measured there, and they really do carry some significant weight in our overall score. So if we look at those measures, then we can see with 80% being our targeted goal of the points possible in that area, we did come in at 56.4% for the 24-25 school year, but that is a 20-point increase from the time that the new measures were rolled out. So while we're seeing increases, to get to that equitable representation, we do need to just continue to evaluate those practices and talent development and understanding, having our teachers better understand the traits of gifted learners. The goal is really that we want to have our students identified and served in those categories, such as economically disadvantaged and underrepresented, to really be proportionate to the number of students who are enrolled full-time in those categories. The numbers, as you see them here, though, they really are reflecting similar trends from across the state. And it's also important to know that once we have identified those students, we're going to continue to serve them all the way through their education here at Lakota. And we have made strides in reducing the gap between underrepresented minorities being served once we have identified those students.
All right, thank you for having us. It really is an honor each year to be able to come up here and share about the great work of our students and staff with the board. So my name's Andrew Wheatley, and I want to talk a little bit about the CCWMR rating. I want to start with a little bit of context. So for the past three years, I've been up here and either presented about the program of study, or about the state report card and the strategic changes that we made to the CCWMR, well, to our program related to the CCWMR. Unfortunately, it does take a few years for those changes to finally impact the graduating cohort, and that's what we're going to see in our data in this presentation. So as you can see from this screen here, we had a 62% of students. 63% is actually three stars, so we made two stars in this category by just that 0.9%. But with that, I want to point out is that this is actually 2024 graduation class. So with this data, we already know next year that we are going to make a 70%. So we will be at three stars next year. That is a data point that we already know. But what I want to do is kind of highlight how we get to this data, and then actually, this section of CCWMR is an area of where we need to improve, but it's actually a section in which we have a lot of highlights to share with you, and I'm going to share some of those with you right now. So if you take a look at the chart there on the right, it shows the various categories that make up the CCWMR. So like I said, three years ago, we took a really good look at this data, knewing this date was coming. And the areas on the left there, the first three columns, which are our students being ACT remediation-free, so students scoring high in the ACT, then students who are taking three AP courses and scoring a three or higher in each of those, and the honors diploma, those are on the left. Just to kind of give some reference here, those same students tend to earn all three of those, so it's not, those are not necessarily stacking on top of one another. Three years ago, what we did notice, though, is that our area of students earning the 12 CCP credentials by the time they graduate, or earning 12-point industry credential, was a place that we could grow quite a bit in, and so that's where we made a lot of strategic changes. But we did that simultaneously by having a goal that we also wanted to increase students participating in and doing well in AP. So I want to share a few of those highlights here. So CCP enrollment has increased fivefold since 2022. In fact, last year, our students earned 11,000 credits of CCP, and we're projected for our students this year to earn 13,000 credits or more in CCP. Three years ago, 8.9% of our students met the metric there of earning 12 total CCP credits by the time they graduated. Today, it's at 19%, so a huge increase there. At that same time, in most districts, when you increase CCP, you might see AP drop, or if you increase AP, you'll see CCP drop. But at the same time, while we increased CCP fivefold, we also saw AP enrollment increase from 1,642 sections taken three years ago to 2,481 taken this year. That's a 51% increase. Also, when you increase AP numbers that much, because you're expanding out the population of students who are taking AP, sometimes people predict that you might see a drop in scores. But during that same time, students earning a three or higher rose from 75% of students earning a three or higher to 86%. So we increased quite a bit, 10%, well, 11% there, while also a 51 overall increase in enrollment in AP. And then, students passing three or more AP exams was at only 5.5% of students doing three or more in 2023, to 6.9% this past year, with our projection based on our enrollment numbers and past practices at 15.7% this next year. So we expect continued improvement in subsequent years. We do really see this growing quite a bit, and getting up to the area which we expect for our school district that really more accurately reflects the outstanding students that we have here in Lakota.
So hopefully, you're kind of seeing the trend here tonight, that we have some great data that we're really excited about, but our focus is clear. It's refining our practices, strengthening our systems, and always aiming for that five stars. So this slide kind of outlines some key action steps that we're taking in response to what the data is showing us. to what the data is showing us. And we're hoping these are strategic student-centered moves designed to support growth across all areas of the report card. So in no general order here, I'm going to invite a few of the colleagues to come up and just talk about some of the action steps in their respective areas. So I don't know, Andrew, did you want to start? Emily is going to start.
All right, so in K-6, some of our new initiatives this year that we foresee supporting growth, I'm going to start with K-3 and thinking about foundational reading skills. We have worked to implement Ohio's five-step continuous improvement process, which is teacher-based teams. And our teachers are meeting twice a month to look at data together and look at where students are, and specifically looking at some of our subgroups as well, to make sure that all students are getting effective instruction during that tier-one instruction in the classroom. Our 3-6 are really looking at the readiness assessments through this process, which are released OST items, again, to make sure that students are making progress toward being proficient and beyond on those OST assessments. And the other really valuable piece of this is that our teachers are really working together to create collective efficacy of moving all of our students and making sure that all students are successful. On the leadership side, we are continuing professional development as well. We have a book study on foundational skills that we're doing with our K-2 principals. That's really given us a monthly opportunity to dig into foundational skills and think about how that's being implemented within their buildings. We have had coaches coming in from our new foundational skills program that modeled lessons for our teachers, and had opportunity for the teachers to meet with those coaches and really dig into making these wonderful materials that we got last year even better this year.
In secondary, it's a continuation of what Emily said. So from previous presentations, we shared that we started action plans a couple of years ago. We continue to refine those action plans, make them a little bit more efficient and more strategic for our teachers, and then in combination with the TBTs, making sure that teachers have time to look at that data and make, you know, decisions for our students, you know, on time and, you know, based on the data they're receiving in front of them. So that's the main part of what we'll be continuing with. A lot of that also revolves around the readiness assessment. So just a quick reminder, the readiness has been put out by the state for the past couple of years, which allows students to practice the state assessments and questions that are similar to it, and then our teachers are able to get that data throughout the school year as opposed to just at the end, and make adjustments for students around that.
And with regard to gifted education this year, the remainder of this year, and into next year for our gifted education programming, it's going to be really important for us to just take a look at everything that has been presented with the rollout of the ODEW updated policy in July of 2025. When I came into the district in August, I made the goal just to go in and do kind of a comprehensive evaluation of things. And one of the primary areas of focus that's going to be really important for us is looking at what kinds of gifted, high-quality professional development do our teachers need to increase their efficacy. We have a large number of gifted classroom teachers serving students across the district, so it's going to be really important that they are skilled in all of the competencies of meeting the needs of those gifted learners. So we'll be focusing on that, as well as finding routine time in the course of a day or a week where classroom teachers and gifted intervention specialists can collaborate together and plan together to design learning experiences that fit, you know, those characteristics and traits of gifted learners. Being able to dive into and look at gifted student data, utilizing the TBT process that Emily just spoke about, we do have gifted intervention specialists actively participating in those processes with classroom teachers. So we just need to, with more intentionality, start looking at what are the programs and systems that students need, gifted students need, what kind of training do their teachers need, and what kind of data is important for us to be looking at to make sure that we have met those learners' needs.
So I'm kind of repeating the same type of things that we're looking at with our English learner program. So as I came into the district in August, I wanted to take some time to see the data, see where our students were, and as you saw in our presentation, our English learners really are performing very well. We've had a large amount of our students exit on the OALPA. Last year, I think it was 396 of our students exited, and we had just under 2,000 for the year, so that was very impressive. So I knew right away that I need to dig in and see like where can we make changes and what can we get to move our students the most. So three things that I want to focus on with my EL team are refining our service models and really looking at what we're doing to ensure that everything that we're doing is responsive, equitable, and aligned to their students' needs. This is including evaluating how we deliver our services and making sure that we're identifying opportunities to give greater flexibility and consistency across the schools. The second thing I want to work on is working to streamline and align our English learner data. I want to make sure that my team really understands the data and how to look at it. I want it to become very actionable. With the OALPA, which is what our assessment is yearly, there's a reading, a writing, a listening, and a speaking. Typically, reading and writing are more difficult to attain while listening and speaking come quicker. So what are we doing in our class time that we have with them to build those domains and those skills for them? And also just trying to target where our kids are. If they're really high in all areas but one, how are we focusing on that, making it more individualized for our students that need some help? And then lastly, I want to expand professional development. I've had the wonderful opportunity of meeting with my team, I'm meeting with them quarterly so I can provide this kind of professional development to them, but we realize that it's not just our EL team that is with our students. Actually, they get the least amount of time, they need support in their, their general education classes as well. So I've been working with administrators on finding time to come in during some of their staff meetings and things like that, to also start providing professional development to the entire district, making sure that all of our teachers have the tools that they need to meet our students where they are. One of the things that we have talked about in the 712 is really focusing on that graduation rate for our English learners. And again, as mentioned before, a lot of those kids that are not making it to graduation are kids that are coming in from outside the country in the ninth and 10th grade, and it's just very difficult. So I'm working really hard with the 712 team and their administrators on what we can add support-wise for those students to help them gain what they need to meet the graduation requirements. Thank you.
Just a few more highlights. One of the mentions on here is enhanced junior high academic support. That's one of the ways that we're working on using, utilizing the academic support bell in our junior high model to give some more targeted work towards student data. So we're working on just different structures and supports that allow our teachers to easily do that. And then the last thing I'll point out, and Krista Heidenreich and Sheri Simpson, part of our professional development end of this, aren't here tonight because we're focused more on student data, but on the right-hand side of the screen is what we're calling a visual called our ecosystem, our professional development ecosystem. And we've really broadened the idea of professional learning, that it's not just a session on a PD day, but it could be in a lot of different ways as far as collaboration with a group of teachers, to working on your own asynchronously, to a traditional professional development day. So that right-hand side, we're working with our teacher leaders who we have in every building, and building out all those different types of opportunities that give our teachers multiple ways to learn. One thing we are super proud of is that we've been monitoring pretty closely feedback from our staff on professional development days and what we're providing overall, and we were just looking at the first look at our October data, and all of our teachers are responding in the 90% level as far as I understand what my role is, I have the supports I need to do my job, and I am taking what I'm learning back to the classroom. So we're very excited to continue that work too. So lots of action steps and lots of exciting things going on in the district. We've given you a lot of information tonight, and I appreciate your support and your ears while you've listened tonight, and I want to thank each of you for this ongoing support of our work. And we're very proud of our progress, and we are open to any questions that you may have for us.
Just go right down the road. Congratulations, first of all. That is very exciting, and it's really nice to see a progression from growth last year continuing on into this year, which is, leads me to my first question. What would you say is the most influential factor contributing to this continued growth?
I'll let anybody from the team say anything here, but I think one of the most foundational pieces is the adoption of math and ELA materials. It's given us a basis of conversation and instructional focus that we hadn't had before that, that has allowed us to kind of take those collaborative conversations to a different level. So prior to when there's teachers utilizing different resources at different pace and different time, they can't always come to the table and talk about the same things because they're not in the same spot or they're not using the same materials. When the adoptions came along, that really heightened the level of conversation that our teachers were able to have about how students are responding to instruction and what our data looks like. So for me, that was one of our biggest differences, but I'll let other team members.
Yep. I just wanted to add to that, that last year with our new materials, our teachers were spending a lot of time figuring out implementation. And now that they're on their second year, this work that we're doing with TBTs, that they have those common assessments and standards that they're working on, they're able to really move to the next level of refining that work through those conversations that they're having about this data. So really excited to see how we can use that to even grow more next year.
Great question. Outside of just the really super high level that everybody's super focused in on this task, you know, which makes a huge difference, and secondary specifically, the action plans, but that's quite a big bucket. So just to kind of once again state about that, you know, we started that work a couple of years ago, really focusing in on having our teachers in the tested subject areas do readiness, and then putting together all the stakeholders that are involved in that process, which is our teachers, our department chairs, our building principals, the MTSS team, a big shout out to them, Mark Byrd and Teresa and Dean Moss, and the work that they do to get that data, and then working with the curriculum department. And when we put those teams together and those stakeholders together to talk about student data, and then to really put strategic action for teachers to take place in the classroom, I think magic happens, and that's what we're seeing in secondary.
My next question is, as we continue to increase the number of stars and growth and achievement and all of those things, we know that in order to sustain growth with smaller numbers, you have to identify specific students and start having conversations about really specific students. So my question is, can you talk a little bit about the tracking of students in junior high and how you're being intentional with the junior high academic support, specifically around advanced placement courses in the CCWMR?
Another great question, and I think an area that we're proud of, so we're excited to talk about it. This has been a big area of focus for us, and so we started taking a look at data a number of years ago. Once again, shout out to our MTSS team and the work that they put in, and taking a look at both state and the national norm data from our students, both at the end of elementary years and then in junior high, and then be like, really take a look at what is the right course for them. And then, so we've made some strategic changes by looking at data, adjusting our advanced matrices, and then really talking to our building principals and getting the right kids into the right course. And what we've seen is the students who then either placed now into advanced courses where they weren't before, even though the data was showing that they belong, those students have overwhelmingly stepped up to that and been successful. And so we see that in the data also, because one, we're going to see improved performance index data when students are put in the right course for them, but we're also going to see value-added data increase and all the things that go along with that. But when that starts in junior high, it takes a number of years to then trickle up to high school. So now we have our high school teachers who are teaching AP courses and advanced courses, whether those are honors or CCP-level advanced courses. Now they have a greater pool of students that have years of reps in advanced coursework, getting to those courses, and they're more likely to take those courses than in high school, now that they've had experience in elementary, or not elementary, but in the junior high. Along with that, we have academic support. So that's the process with, we have touchpoints with all the building principals, with our MTSS team and our curriculum team, that look at that student data that then translates down into the buildings making decisions with that data that they're given by the district, in order to place students into academic support bell in the right places and give them the right instruction they need to help grow.
That's great.
I was just going to add, within the CCWMR piece, we do start looking in junior high at things like the prediction score for ACT, that data that kind of tells us, because the ACT remediation-free score is one of the areas to meet CCWMR, and if a student is meeting that or not, that is kind of a guide for us in academic advising and looking to the future. We're working with Tracy Hummer, who oversees the counselors, to really talk and beef up with our counselors, the talking points on advising students based on the data profile that they're seeing. So we're increasing the number of touchpoints that a student will see their counselor throughout their seven-through-12 experience, and then also giving the counselors those customized talking points to say, I'm looking at a child's data, now I have some ideas about how to guide them through the next six years of their career.
A few other accents, as you can tell, this is a big one, she teed us up on this, right? But I think about Dr. Wiley, the first thing she came into all the administrators, and she had the famous picture of the arrows in all different directions, and the first thing is to make sure they're all pointing in the right direction, right? And so all this work we've talked about, one of the nice things with this advanced work, going back to your elementary to junior high, we brought into the team one of our veteran elementary principals, one of our veteran junior high principals who have both made a lot of great gains, and just getting, just hearing them, the power of the two of them talking about even like their master scheduling process. So some of the infrastructure even that's, needs to be in place to make sure kids get into the right place, to make sure we have the right lanes that are open, as well as, you know, the right talking points. So that's been huge. That CCW and those ACT projections, I met with all the high school counselors at each of the three high schools, they have those projection data points now for every single student that they can use. It's just another, another piece that they can, they can work on with that. And speaking, kind of tidying in as well to the curriculum, just this last week, it was great to hear our seventh-grade advanced math, our compacted math class, but the teachers are now, they're advocating, hey, right now, our kids take the seventh-grade OST, but we think that because of the way we're moving in this new curriculum, the way it's aligned, they could potentially take the eighth-grade one. And that is another potential bonus for us to explore that we can go through. It was just great to hear our teachers really want to say, hey, I think our kids are ready for this kind of rigor. So just little accents to the things we've talked about.
That's great. I only have two more questions. Sorry. So along the lines of our gifted programming, I feel like that's a conversation that our board has talked about a lot over the last year, I'll say, is what does that look like? Are we, are we meeting goals? Do we have the right people in the right places? Are we targeting the right students? All of those conversations have happened over the last year. So my question is, can you highlight some strengths so far this year and the changes that were made?
So I think one of the important things to just consider as we move forward, and even with the successes that we have had with gifted in the past, you know, there's some changes that at present we're evaluating with regard to the ODEW crosswalk, and really taking a look at how are we aligned with ODEW policy and making sure that we're in lockstep with what ODE has implemented, as those are really some of the best practices that we want to consider and even continue, the things that we have in place right now. So I would say with regard to student placement and the programming that's available at the elementary level and the plus courses, and making sure that we have successfully clustered our elementary students in math and ELA, we have coursework that is really designed to help those gifted learners excel and give the classroom teachers the opportunity to differentiate the learning for those students. So the more that we cluster them together... So the more that we cluster them together, and we have, the more we're going to maximize the learning that's taking place in those settings. We do have use of the GIS staff at the elementary level also, who are serving, right now, I think one of the highlights of the program at the elementary level with the GIS is their work with the superior cognitive students, because superior cognitive students have a unique need, right? They just have some different traits from those academically identified. So those small group pullouts right now that the GIS are serving really give them the opportunity to kind of tap into some of those unique traits of the gifted learners. Speaking to, Andrew, speaking to all of the opportunities to, for our secondary students to engage with advanced placement courses, I think has also been beneficial for the students, just giving them more opportunities to engage in CCP honors classes, I think is something I look forward to even having expanded opportunities for our gifted students. But I think most importantly, what we need to do above all with all of those things in place is make sure that our gifted classroom teachers, those are the individuals serving students day in and day out, have the skills that they need to serve those students. Because for as many GISs as we have in place, for as many, you know, just courses as we have available for our attention to those superior cog students in the elementary level, our teachers, our classroom teachers who are with those students day in and day out, we really need to make sure that they have the training and the gifted competencies that they need to serve those students well.
Thank you. Okay, my last question is, I believe that you are completely capable of earning five stars next year. So how is we, how can we as a board help you get there?
I think number one, as I spoke to before about our ELA and math adoptions, we do have science on the docket for this year. So having the board's support as we go through yet another adoption process, I think would be key. We've learned a lot through that process and we've learned a lot about how to implement widespread and how to improve consistency and look at that fidelity early on. So I think continued support there. Overall, I think just continuing to let the teams do what they are best at doing, doing our data work and encouraging the use of data in our buildings and supporting our principals. I think, I think the board's giving us all the tools we need to make that happen. I don't know if anyone else from the team has a specific point there, but somebody's going to put in their pet project right now.
Mrs. French always takes the best questions, or I just try to look like she does.
I gave ample opportunity for you all to go first. I waited, I gave lots of away time.
I'm just hiding behind your excellence, that's all. I do have a few questions. So, and Mr. Wheatley, when it comes to the great work that you guys have done with AP and CCP courses, what's been amazing is the number of increase as well as the number of kids who are like succeeding in both of those, and it's been a great trajectory. As I think about looking forward, is that a trend that I should continue to expect like to grow, or have we kind of like maxed out how we've gotten that identification there?
No, actually expect it to continue to grow. There's still courses, really great AP courses that we can offer in the future that would expand into student interests and student abilities that we are not currently offering, so we're exploring those now to try to be able to expand even more. Those areas, one of those areas would be like in music and arts. So just places that we're looking to explore. And then also with CCP, we still have a lot of room for growth. I mean, you know, roughly seventy to eighty percent of our kids go off to college, so it wouldn't be unreasonable for every kid who goes off to college to have twelve credits leaving or twelve credits plus some AP courses, and we're not at that number yet. But ultimately, that's, that's what the goal is. I mean, the goal is to hit five stars in the CCWMR, and I think you're going to continue to see growth until we get there.
Thank you. While you're up there, I have another question, but maybe it's not for you. So for the CCMR, I noticed on the chart, the percentages of, as we're looking at ACT and all of that, when we get to apprenticeships and military, how should I think about that in relation to that measure?
Yeah, we continue to track military as best as we can. Apprenticeships are an area in which we continue to explore. That's really where we kind of partner with Butler Tech and utilize the services that they have. They're an incredible partner and do a great job with those types of things. But on that note, there's also this whole spectrum of area of experience ships and internships and things that are great for students that build resume-worthy experiences, things that set kids apart from other kids across the nation when they're applying for colleges to get them into the colleges that are goals of theirs. Like that's a whole nother area of growth for us that does fit a little bit within CCWMR but doesn't fit squarely within it. So we are going to continue to expand on that quite a bit. Some of that expansion will help our CCWMR, but some of that expansion will just be flat out good for kids.
Great, thank you. And then, Mrs. Harris, as when it comes to gifted, you've already talked a lot about the opportunities that we have there. Are we seeing any sort of, when we look at it by grade level or bands, is there any sort of area that has a heightened opportunity versus others?
Could you repeat, you said by, excuse me?
By grade or by bands? So, you know, you talked a lot about the successes that you've had in the elementary level, but is there, how should I think about junior high or high school? Where's the most opportunity for us to have improved performance?
Absolutely. I definitely think at the secondary level, we really need to look at how are we going to broaden the growth of our teachers serving those students there. Right now, the service at the secondary level comes from the actual placement in an advanced setting, whether it's an AP course, an honors course, a CCP course. The designation of the course itself is what is actually identified as the service for reporting purposes. But we really need to look at, even though those teachers are teaching more rigorous kind of content that we would see in a general education classroom setting, then are the teachers still skilled in meeting the needs of those learners that are gifted, who are sitting in those classes alongside the students who are not gifted as well? We really need to start tapping into that a little bit more.
Thank you, very helpful. That's all I had.
Thank you so much for your presentation, and you make it easier. Most of the questions I had, I would have, Mrs. French asked the questions better than I would have asked. My concern was on gifted. However, when I saw this comment here, we scored zero on gifted performance index and gifted indications and services. So this comment helped me, and I think that's taken care of that for me. It says gifted points are either you score all to get the five point or nothing. So I don't know where we are at that point, but what can we do to get there?
Absolutely. So what we need to do there is really look at those gifted students who are in that level of proficient. So what we want to see is gifted students perform at an above-average level. The way in which the measure is set up is that we increase the level of points that we earn as students fall into those accelerated advanced and advanced plus category ratings on the OST tests and the grade level achievement test. So one of the important things moving forward will be to make sure that, first of all, that all of our staff is aware of how that measurement works for those gifted students and knowing where gifted students should fall at the end of their time in a course in terms of their assessment on the state test, but also making sure that if there are students who need to, you know, if we by some chance had a gifted student who fell into that limited or basic category, especially at the secondary level, that would need to retake that test for points, that we're going back and doing targeted interventions, looking at the data to say, where did the student fall short? What are those areas of skill, content areas on the test that we need to go back and revisit with those students? But also even beyond that, for the students that may go ahead and move on to the next test, we should be going back and looking at individual student data and saying, where did they fall short? So that we can build those skills moving in to subsequent years and not just say, you know, that was the test and move on. We still need to continue building on where students were so that the next test that they encounter, as those skills are built upon one another, they're going to perform better on subsequent tests.
Okay, so that is just a comment. Thank you so much for, my fear before was, are we going to be able to even maintain? I thought maybe with the changes, with Dr. Wiley coming over and all the changes, we might go down, but for us to maintain, I'm very, very proud. I'm going out with a high shoulder. Thank you.
Mrs. Kessler? I'm sorry, are you done? Okay, excuse me.
First of all, let's welcome to our new two, two new team members. Welcome to Lakota, we're glad you're here. Your presentation is always amazing and it's always, I appreciate so much how you dig deep into the data. I have a couple of comments and just a couple of questions. I'm so thankful that we have not only identified children who are possibly on that level to take advanced and AP classes, and we've pushed them to get there. I appreciate that we've pushed them and we've supported them to make sure they're successful. We didn't push them to get a number on a report card. We pushed them because we knew their potential and we made sure that they reached their potential. So I really appreciate that. One of the questions I have is, I know it's student-focused on data, but on PDs, Lori, do we, do we get, is there any PD where we get feedback from our staff on, do they like it? Would they rather have another option? Do they get to evaluate PD and what works best for them?
Yes, that's actually something that, and we can share with you, we have year impact reports on our professional development specifically that collects teacher feedback. And one of the things we wanted to make sure we monitor, we wanted to keep our questions consistent across the adoption process so that we can measure, you know, you hear a lot of feedback about, you know, what teachers are struggling with and what's going well and what's not going well, and we wanted to kind of have a regular temperature read on those questions. So we do have that through the adoption, but we also consistently ask for feedback on, did this meet your needs? Is this applicable to the classroom? What else do you need? One of the things that teachers say time and time again is time, and they want to collaborate. So we've tried to really intentionally build collaboration into all of our PD plans, so it's not just come and sit and learn about something for forty-five minutes, but we're really breaking that down into a sizable learning chunk and then a lot of application, discussion, collaboration time, which has been a nice balance for our buildings because there have been times when we've been really heavy-handed on what the professional development looks like and other times been really hands-off. So I think we're striking that right balance of getting their feedback, providing the opportunities for the next PD opportunity, and then giving some flexibility in what that could look like. So yes, we're constantly requesting feedback from our teachers. And I'm excited to say, we just looked at that October data from our October PD day, and we had almost seven hundred responses, which is high for us. So yes, and I think the teachers are getting more comfortable with providing that to us the more that we ask for it too.
Do we allow, when we're doing teacher PD on whatever it might be, if it's gifted, special ed, anything like that, do we allow instructional aides who are working in the classroom to sit in on this PD just to understand? Is that a Dr. Wiley question?
Yes, as their time and schedule allows, absolutely. And they are available for some of our professional development days, so they have some customized things that they go through. But that's definitely something that we continue to hear as a need, so we are continuing to look at that group of individuals and specifically.
That is a continuing to look at work calendars. So oftentimes, our aides don't work on our PD days, you know, they're not consistently at least, and so we're continuing to look at work calendars. And then Lori and I were also talking about the other day, particularly from our aid group or more of our LSSA staff members, we get a lot of feedback about making sure that that PD is very meaningful for their role and very catered to their role. And so Lori and I recently were just talking about how do we expand that? We do really well on that, like in LEA and teachers, but how do we look at classified roles and make sure that it is meaningful PD for their specific role, whether that's an aide, whether that's a nurse, whether that's custodian, whether that's an office manager? So continue to look at that and work calendars to find that balance of how they're here on the needed days to get that PD.
Thank you. As we look at curriculum and things that we offer and courses we offer our students, this is going to be a loaded question, are we looking at adding any world languages to our curriculum?
Actually, the curriculum team and I, so a couple of things to that, yes, we are exploring the idea of world language, but I think bigger than that, really looking at, when you talk about electives, looking at student voice, right? As adults, we can sit and brainstorm or we can get wonderful course proposals from our staff, but really getting student voice about what they want to see. And then, and coupling that with what fits into our curriculum, what fits in that sequence, and also really currently in the next probably year or so, auditing our course requirements and graduation requirements to make sure that is in line with where we want it to be. So all of that kind of tied together would have more robust course offerings that are tied to student voice, and then have a very comprehensive diversified program, seven through twelve. And then also, we've even talked about making sure that those experiences that you have in the high school, that there are touch points all the way down in the elementary school, so that students can start to feel, can start to understand their past and their specialties and their skills early on, and then be able to work that all throughout the K-12 program.
Yeah. Just one more comment. It looked like on the early literacy piece and trying to increase those stars, that the correlation between people that are getting higher scores because of the grade bands in their buildings means we've made the right decision to go to a K-5 model in our, you know, in our new master facility plan, to have that continued exposure so that we're not moving buildings. So I'm glad to see that that's a, that's a component. But great work, great job. Thank you all for your hard work. We very much appreciate all you're doing.
Maybe if, I'm going to go ahead and ask my questions before I turn it over to you, Mr. Zink and Dr. Whiteley, if that's okay, so you can kind of bring it all.
I don't have any questions.
This isn't his side of the house, as he would say.
So, special ed, how has that impacted the report card results? Any focuses there? Just any thoughts that anyone would like to share on how our students with special needs are being impacted by this work?
Yeah, I think they're, they're making the same essential gains that we're seeing across others. They're certainly not an outlier in any sort of a negative way. They're continuing to move along in the right direction, I think, which is, which is great. I think we're, as our team, we're, and Longworth's team, we're trying to be more intentional in, in really just being collaborative across the board with, with our work to make sure we're, we're not, you know, missing any opportunities to collaborate between the curriculum side and the special services side. But yeah, I wouldn't say they're, they're not necessarily striking out as a, as an outlier in the real high positive, but also definitely not the negatives. They're definitely moving in the right direction. You know, I feel, feel pretty strongly about the direction that we're going and we continue to provide that service well.
Great.
Lori's got something to add to.
I was just going to say, I'd be remiss if I didn't bring up our data work for all individual students. I think if you kind of took our MTSS processes and compared them across the state, you'd find that we have probably the best data team there is. So our, Mark Byrd, Teresa Brock, they are providing reports by classroom level. So every teacher gets customized reports on their individual classes, every individual in their class, to help make them, help them make instructional decisions. And that's a level of data work I've never seen in my educational time. So I will say, when you ask specifically about special education, we are watching student data about as closely as you possibly can from a group standpoint, from what classes kids are registering in. A small example is, you know, we added AP human geo recently, and we wanted to specifically, we were a little concerned about, is that, you know, a lot for a freshman? We data harvested and found the right kids for that class. We watched them, we monitored them, and then we saw, yes, that was successful and released that out. So we are consistently looking at where all groups of students are moving throughout our system, and I do think that is highly unique to Lakota, especially a system this size that we're able to kind of keep an eye on all those pieces data-wise.
With the new curriculum rollout, I appreciate the help that that's brought, but I know that also brings challenges often with the new curriculum. I just wanted to share that I did receive feedback from a teacher who said one of the best things about that new rollout has been the collaboration. So I appreciate in response to Kelly's answer, you saying that you're striking that balance. And this was a high school teacher who, again, they might have a reputation at times for getting a little siloed in their, their four walls. So I, this particular teacher just said that that's been wonderful, to share the best practices, to work together, to find the best way to deliver this new curriculum. So thank you for facilitating that work amongst the staff to be able to do that, because it seems like that's been very valuable and will give us an opportunity to continue to springboard off this investment that we've made in the curriculum. And then, so I guess, again, we've talked about these new curriculum adoptions, are you feeling the same positive? You mentioned there's been some learnings. Do, would you like to speak further of how you hope to better capture and continue to improve the process of rolling out new curriculum?
Sure. I think a lot of what we're learning about is just the implementation on a large system scale. From what we From what we know teachers need to hear before a decision's made, what they need to hear first after a decision's made, how and when we want materials to arrive, how and when we want to disperse those materials and track and inventory, all those things help our teachers feel ready when they get into the classroom on the first day of school implementing new curriculum. We've definitely learned a lot about how our professional development needs grow throughout the process from research to, you know, adoption to implementation to year two, to kind of talk about how we can really fine tune all of those skills as we get in. So we're seeing how our PD has to ebb and flow depending on where different groups of teachers are in the adoption process. And to Dr. Whiteley's point, we're getting more and more customized with our professional development plans to look specifically at groups of teachers to say, okay, if you're a fourth grade ELA teacher and you're also teaching math, we're designing with those specific things in mind. So I think overall, it's just given us a great opportunity to create systems that are reliable for teachers and that are responsive to their feedback. But it has given us just a core base of conversation for which to base all of our plans. So it's just been a really fun process to go through. And I think our teachers, you know, there are growing pains with any choices of new materials or any kind of shifts to our practice, but it is driving really great deep conversation that we wouldn't have had otherwise. So I think we're still learning a lot about that, but we're learning it's multi-year process and it's refining and refining and I think Andrew has more to add.
Yeah. We've also increased the amount of piloting that we do with materials ahead of time. And also a shout out to our tech team because that's a collaborative process with the tech department because a lot of part, when you're piloting, you're also making sure that the systems work. And so that really increases the teacher experience and the student experience when they can come in, you know, next year with their new science materials and make sure that we've already worked out all the bugs when a technology and implementation standpoint. So also a shout out to that team, just in the collaboration and working through that process a year in advance.
And this might be for you as well, Mr. Wheatley, that senior flex limits. I know we made some changes to when students could leave campus and do you think that that's had a positive impact on both the student experience as well as results?
It depends on who you ask, right? So what I can tell you is that we have more kids taking some of our really great classes. And I think that's an important thing, but we're also seeing that just play out in the data too. We offer such a great experience here in Lakota for our students and so it's good to have our students actually in the building. But we also are still able to provide that flexibility for students who do really have things that are going to kind of help them transition to the next part of their life. But we are seeing in the data that we have more kids enrolling in a lot of our great programs and a lot of that has to do with making a little bit of limitations to senior flex.
I noticed under the achievement bar graph that there has been a lot of growth under Advanced Plus. Do we attribute that to what and how will we continue to expand on that?
Yeah, so we are able to get the Advanced Plus when we have students taking a, one of the courses above what the traditional grade would be. So a couple of years ago, for example, we had our Advanced, talking junior high, we had our Advanced Science VII. We started having them take the eighth grade science test. And so when that happens, student gets a four, let's say they earn what it would be, a four, it's sort of like a weighted course in high school for your GPA. So if you get a four, you actually get a five. If you get a five, you score an advanced, you actually get the Advanced Plus. And so by and large, you know, that combination of giving them the opportunity to show what they know in that assessment and making sure we're pushing them, we are seeing a lot of those kids getting the five plus. We see that with our eighth graders who take Algebra I at the junior high, we have Biology at the freshman, we have the American History at freshman year, and then we're potentially exploring the possibility of that, again, like I referenced earlier, the seventh grade math, taking that eighth grade, that'd be yet another layer of, you know, a portion of our kids who'd have a chance to get the Advanced Plus.
Great. I think that's most of what I have on my list. I will say, again, the AP and the College Credit Plus, kudos to everyone who's been involved in that, that we did not see that drop in AP. At the same time, I know that was a concern going in, so thank you for continuing to have such good offerings that kids are wanting to do both. And then just anecdotally, from my house this weekend was fall break for Ohio State and my son is, you know, only your kids can do, said, you know, I knew Lakota was a solid district. He's like, but I thought you might have hyped it a little too much, Mom. He's like, and I'm realizing now that I'm at school and how much better I'm prepared than everyone around me, that perhaps I did not fully appreciate what a great district I came from and how fortunate I am. And it gives me chills to like say that, to have everybody who poured into him and how we've set these kids up for success at the next level. So thank you to everyone for all the work that you have done to make our kids successful as they go out into the world, which is all of our goal. So from the, you know, my very honest child of, you know, I thought you were full of crap basically, Mom. But I found out it was true.
You probably are another thing.
I really did appreciate that our kids can see what's happening within our walls in real times, even if they don't appreciate it at the time. So thank you for all you've done. And I will thank Adam for creating the investment, even if he doesn't want to say, and helping to find a good plan for curriculum adoption and rotation and making sure that we continue to not get behind in our curriculum adoption because we saw the impact that had on the report card. So I appreciate that we're making that financial investment. And then Dr. Whiteley, anything else?
That as well as planning for CCP. We've got that built in as well.
No, I think the team started out with, you know, just, this is a testament to all the hard work of not only our staff, but our students, but also just, I would also say the team that just presented to you. I know they are always very, very focused on the data and very, very focused on the student experience and making sure that that student experience is being supported not only in the classroom, but from departments, whether that's our tech department, our curriculum department, or special education department. And so it really does take a team effort, takes a village. And so I think that this data is a testament to that, but as Ms. French said, we will certainly can and will achieve that five stars as we work together to make sure we examine the data and do what's best for students.
Wonderful. All right, any last words, thoughts, topics before we move on? Thank you so much for your time and investment. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, and with that, we'll move to treasurer's recommendations. A, approval of minutes, and B, approval of the monthly financial reports. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Isaac? Any discussion? Hearing none, Adam, please call the roll.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
We have superintendent's recommendation, A, approval of personnel items, B, approve employment resolutions, and C, approve donations. Do I have a motion? So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
All right, we'll do closing comments and we'll let Isaac go before Christina this time, so. I sat on my comment.
Yeah, I don't have much to, for a closing comment, but just recognize our students this morning, I mean, this evening, can imagine seven board members, I mean, seven people firing questions on this case and they were just handling it like, like, just so, I'm very, very proud of what we're doing here. And also to give kudos to our team, the curriculum team, the 4.5 stars that we maintain is something that I know, I was scared before, thought we're not going to be able to even maintain. So I'm very, very proud of what Dr. Whiteley and your team, Adam and your team, what you guys are doing. Thank you so much, so proud.
Mr. Horton?
Yeah, I just want to take a moment to just talk about what we just heard, which was fantastic. So really, really proud to see that we maintained our ratings, a rating of 4.5. And I think there's a lot of discussion when I talk with people about, you know, why aren't we five stars? And some of the highlights that I took from, from the report that we got back, right, of the, of the schools that are four or five stars, we have the highest general education class size ratio. So really three students higher than, than the others that we're, that we're looking at when we're talking about the highest achieving districts in the, in the state. We also spend $2,000 less per pupil. And then as we talk about, you know, our future plans, we're very optimistic about what could happen as far as, you know, with new facilities, but we've also been talking quite a bit about the limits of space. And so when we look at some of the things that we're looking at down the road, if we, now that we're out of space, if we can't somehow fix that, you know, the fact that, Mrs. Casper, I think you even said earlier, you know, we noticed the correlation that we were the only, only school that didn't have continuous grade band, grade band for K through three and how that impacted early literacy. And then the fact that we see in our data that all-day kindergarten, they come in ready at 91% versus half-day. And as we're running out of space, you know, one of the things that will probably be impacted or could likely get impacted is the fact that we would maybe have to choose to move away from all-day kindergarten. So as we're talking about these things, I think it's just really, we tend to think about our facilities in context of finances and then we switch to the other side of our head and think about student achievement. And there's so much, and that's just some of the highlights, but there was so much in that presentation that is tied to the plans that have gone into the master facilities. And so just wanted to highlight that for the community because we often talk about these in separate buckets. And when I talk with the community, it's dollars and cents, dollars and cents. For me, it's about student achievement and I'm really reassured of the work and the thought and intentionality that went behind the master facilities plan to address all of this that we just heard from, from our staff. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Mrs. French?
Well, I think I said all the things I needed to say about the report cards, so I'll skip right over that. I am actually, I feel like there's so few opportunities that our district as a whole comes together to celebrate and I feel like Friday night's East-West game is going to be a celebration. So I am looking forward to seeing us come together as a whole district and celebrate our students on the field and in the band and all the things.
Wonderful. Anything else? Nope, you're good.
Yes, on that note, I want to thank all of our staff and students and buildings that brought in food for Reach Out Lakota. I'm anxiously waiting till Friday to hear who the big winner may be. You see on social media, these people don't mess around. There are cans stacked in some of these buildings almost to the ceiling. So it will be fun, as always, to see who the winning, not only who the winning school is, but if we can beat our record from last year. So also lots going on. Congratulations to our high school bands. They went to Orlando this weekend and competed in a very large competition and both landed in the top 10. Lakota East was fifth and Lakota West was eighth, so that's quite an accomplishment. So congratulations to them. It looks like too, just from some of the pictures, they might've had a little fun too, going to Universal and maybe enjoying some sunshine. So that's it. I'm excited for the weekend as well.
Mr. Zink?
Shout out to Bobby Joe Bobcamp and Mandy Woods. Both of them are employees in the Welcome Center. They reached Level One Mastery, which got them a little bit of a pay bump. It's something we put in place a few years ago and we've had a lot of positive feedback about doing things that way. It kind of allows our staff to take into their own hands their training and development and know what's to be expected of them. So congratulations to both of them. Also, thanks for the curriculum team for coming in tonight. We have definitely been very intentional on trying to structure things in a way so that the finance is in place for the initiatives that we want to put together for our students. So thanks for coming in tonight and sharing all the news. That's all I have.
Dr. Whiteley?
I cannot believe that first quarter is essentially, it's over. You know, today, report cards will be hitting hack pretty soon, so that's exciting. But I think, what a great way, to your point, at the end of first quarter, to celebrate as a community on Friday together as a we. I know we've had lots of internal conversations. While it is healthy rivalry and competition, it is about putting our best foot forward for the community to make sure that we show good sportsmanship and just, just really good cheerleading from the sidelines. We try not to cheer, we try to be neutral on all sides, so bust out those half jerseys. But I think it'll be a wonderful opportunity with our community to see Friday whatever happens.
I appreciate, Isaac's already wearing his East-West sweatshirt tonight, so he's already repping for Friday night. He's preparing. I was checking off my notes as you all went through. So again, just a huge thank you to the curriculum team and all the work. We talk about student achievement, that's why we're here, that's what we're doing, what we do. And to see those results, but never be satisfied and always, how might we do better, is a great mentality. And I know it's all about reaching each one of those individual students where they are and our focus continues to grow in that area. And thank you to Dr. Whiteley for your leadership and making sure that the focus is where it needs to be and every day doing what we should for kids. So we appreciate that. And with that, I'd like to have a motion to enter into executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official pro high revised code 121.22. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
We'll do Doug and then Isaac as second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Adam, please call the roll.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes. The only action we will take is to dismiss the meeting afterwards.
...